Thank you, and before I call this new board meeting for independent school district number 544 to order, I'll make a couple remarks. This is a reminder that this is a public meeting, but not a public forum. And so, we have not arranged any comments section for tonight, and so this will simply be the board conducting our business this morning. And with that, I will look for the clerk to establish a forum. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Herby is present, Steven Biggessa.
Here.
We have a forum. Thank you. We, this is a special board meeting, we have a pretty singularity of our mission this morning. We're gonna begin with agenda approval, a report by Superintendent Drake, and then, and then carry on from there. Is there a motion to approve the agenda before us?
So moved.
A second? Second. Any discussion on the agenda?
Can we make the new business role table all open? Is that possible?
I don't see any reason we could not do that.
Thank you.
So, we will, any other discussion on the agenda? All right, all in favor of approving with a special modifications, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye. The agenda is approved, and then we'll turn to Superintendent Drake for a report on COVID and an update for the board.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
This report will outline the latest data that we have locally within our school district. And then it will talk about a few options that the district has moving forward, or mitigation strategies that it could consider. So, these are a couple things, just kind of taken from the headlines in the last couple days. From the first one, to my left, on October 18th, indicating that Minnesota ranked seventh highest COVID case rate in the country. And then, just very recently, Grove Health, Lake Region are saying that COVID cases are forcing them to turn away patients. So, as we look at the impact of COVID-19, I do think it's important, while our business focuses on education of the children, the impact is broader in our community than just that. A couple statistics about vaccinations, obviously vaccinations are purely voluntary, are part of families and students that are eligible. But at the high school, we have forty-two point two-six percent of our eligible students that are vaccinated. And at the middle school level, that drops down to just under twenty-two percent. This is data, and, and I've shared this before, but again, as a reminder, you just saw that as a state, Minnesota ranked seventh nationally. So, where does Otter Tail County compare in terms of percent of tests positive and seven-day case rate in comparison to the rest of the state? So, you see our most recent data through kind of the end of September, places Otter Tail County ahead of the state rate, both in terms of seven-day case rate for ten thousand and percent of tests positive. So, in a state that ranks seventh nationally, Otter Tail County is ahead of the state average. Again, these are just very clear charts or graphs that would indicate what the disease is doing in our local county. As you look at left confirmed case rates, rates by week, this is a very clear trajectory here in terms of what's gone in our local area. County transmission, this is an important figure right here, thirteen point six-seven percent. As this is a data point that factors in some districts that choose to use matrix type model that drives their decisions. Again, another form of information, very easy to take a quick snapshot of that. We do have, this will come on in a second, we do have a little bit of a dip here, which would hopefully lead to a continued slide down this direction. But as a general rule of thumb, we have simply seen a steady uptick in cases since, since about the first of August. This information is related to school cases, I did share this a week ago, but this is where we were at, student and staff a year ago. The yellow is where we're at now. Again, clearly showing that the issue has had a much, much more pronounced effect, profound impact than did a year ago. This dark yellow and a golden color here indicates the number of cases under the age of eighteen. And in September, we can see that the golden colored swat was larger than all of the cases combined among each groups a year ago in September. This is information that is shared to us by Otter Tail County Public Council. They do ask, because of potential sensitivity in local communities, that the general list of towns not be shared. So, I blacked out everything but Fergus Falls. You can see where we're at here as of ten fourteen twenty-one. In part, this, you know, this is reflective of our larger population in the county. But again, is another visual chart in showing the prevalence of the illness in our local county. So, what's, what's going on in terms of in-school transmission, students and staff? I didn't have, so, keep in mind, this one was a report that was done in a year ago, a little bit earlier. I didn't have the next one because I'm thinking that coincided with NDA break. But we had eight cases a year to date, staff and students a year ago, at approximately this point in time. Just as a reminder, as the earlier table indicated, we didn't hit our peak until that November, December timeframe. So, this time last year, our cases were really quite, quite low. Here's where we're at as of the end of the day yesterday. Seems like a lot happens each week now, but I want to say about a week ago when I gave this report, I think we were sitting at the low, low eighties maybe. Not exactly. Last year, in total, over the course of an entire school year, we finished with a hundred and eighty cases. We're thirty days into this, into the school year approximately. Are we seeing in-school transmission? That would be pretty hard for people to argue that we're not. Adams is a, is a pretty small school, we already had twenty-five and a half cases here. I do want to just offer a very quick explanation of the half case. This happened to be related to shared staff that we have across multiple buildings. So, in this case, we had a staff member that, that would have worked, or multiple staff members that worked in more than one building. So, that's where those fractions arise. This is another data point, and you'll see these figures here are the ones that I'll reference, case rate for ten thousand people. This is sitting at fifty-eight point eight, and then case rate for a hundred thousand people at the five hundred and eighty-eight mark. This is, again, is part of data that's referenced in some of the decision-making matrices that are used by other districts to guide their mitigation strategies. And again, just another bar graph showing the rapid increase, rapid or steep trajectory of the left confirmed cases. So, all these data points, you know, they're, it's very straightforward that we're seeing a lot of incidents of COVID-19 in our state, in our county, and locally in our school district. So, here's where things get really interesting. So, when you think about mitigation options, we have none at our disposal that's going to make everyone in the community happy. We're based on comments that we've received over the last couple weeks. I would say that we have a lot of strong opinions that the district should take a, a very active role in trying to mitigate the spread of the disease, and other strong opinions probably held by a similar amount of people that would believe that the district's role is education and leave the health decisions in the hands of parents. So, those two things don't go hand in hand, which places us in a very, you know, very difficult position in trying to do what's right for the health and safety of our students and staff, and to try to continue to have cordial and respectful relationships with our families. So, the first option I list is simply to maintain the three through K, pre-K through six mask requirement, which would be status quo as far as where we're at this morning. So, I'm just listing my own opinions on what I think are the pros and cons. The pros are the data points to a high, high case rates and transmission. We're continuing to see the, the presence of the illness at rates that far exceed where we were at a year ago. So, the data will support taking mitigation matters, which, based on the preponderance of, of the health organizations we refer to, would include wearing masks. On the con, right now, this action by the district is symbolic, I would say. We have a large number of, of people that are choosing not to comply with this. And enforcement really places the district in a very unfavorable position. We want to have good relationships with their families. So, to enforce it means that we are engaged in conflict with their families. And given the number of students that aren't wearing the mask under the requirement right now, it would result in a significant amount of either the district saying, "You can't come to school now because you're not going to wear the mask," or parents potentially choosing other options to educate their kids, et cetera. None of those are healthy responses between our families and our school. And so, there's really, in my opinion, there's really no good way to navigate this on a larger scale. I don't know where there's a bottom middle ground to be found, very difficult issue. I hope that the general public realizes we're trying to, as every other district in the state, trying to navigate this the best that we can. Option number two would be to return to mask strictly recommended but not required. So, the pro is, it appeases those that believe health-related decisions are solely the right of a parent. So, it takes the school district out of that, the middle of that battle. On the con, we tried this, we're thirty days, basically thirty days into it, we've seen what's happened with our transmission rates. We are seeing as a community what more of a laissez-faire response is in terms of stress on our healthcare systems, et cetera. It's to suggest that recommended but not required is having a positive impact, I, I think that that's, that would be disingenuous. We have a problem, we have a problem in our school, and we have a problem in our community. It also places us at odds, again, as you look at this, I find no way of quote-unquote winning. It places us at odds with those families that do expect the district to take a stronger role in putting measures in place to protect the health and welfare of their children. And also, I would say that we have staff members that expect the district to play a stronger role in protecting their health as a, you know, as a safe work environment as well. So, that's option number two, again, with what I consider pros and cons. Option number three is to develop a matrix model for COVID-19 mitigation. On the pro side, it informs parents exactly when changes will take place and what data is being used to make those decisions or guide those decisions. On the con, you know, the mitigation strategies don't change. You're either masking up, or you're, you're practicing social separation. We don't have a lot of options here. And if masking is not something that the community will support, social separation may be the only, only option that we have left. So, from what we've heard, the response of the school from some people shouldn't be based on data, et cetera. It's more of a personal rights issue, et cetera. So, how can we navigate those, those contingencies, those beliefs? I do want to walk through for the board, three different mitigation matrix models. And I'll kind of, uh, share a little bit about where compliance with one of these, or adherence to one of these models would be placing us, based on our data today. So, you see, Anoka Hennepin, this would be the largest district in the state of Minnesota, has the COVID-19 mitigation matrix. They base their responses on either the county seven-day case rate per ten thousand, or they base it on the number of students in, in a class at the elementary level that are COVID-positive. So, if you look up, where would we be at if we were following this model? So, if you remember, a couple slides earlier, I showed you that information that placed us at a fifty-eight point eight. That would put us well beyond the initial threshold for level five. And you could see that had we even been in level four, their district would have been requiring face coverings for students and staff at grades eight through six. So, were we, were we following this decision-making matrix? We would be right in the same position that we were with the model that we used about, started about two weeks, week and a half ago. So, let's say that we were going to not take the top, the upper portion of this model, but we were going to base it on the lower level of this model. I believe that we would have had at this point, at least, I know we have one for sure, I believe we would have had two classrooms that would have hit the three or more people in the, in the elementary classroom over the space of one week with three or more cases. So, again, that's, that would have pushed us into a face covering required piece, which we were already doing, and faced a fairly sharp criticism among some of our constituents for that response. I guess what's maybe important for the district to know is that when we moved into the face, the mask requirement, that wasn't the decision that was standing out on some kind of island by itself. This, this was a decision that would have been supported by other districts looking at the same data we had, and, and responding in kind. So, this is a Highway Ten corridor matrix, a different approach to it. They're looking at either district positive cases or building positive cases. In this case, I just ran some very rough numbers. And I used the three percent threshold because that's when, that's when you would have seen more of a masking type response. So, you see, their mask required, et cetera, for students and staff in that respective building. And so, this would be building-wide thresholds that would kick, I shouldn't say kick the district, but drive the district into what I'll call a kind of a level-three response or higher. That would be roughly these numbers up on the side. Again, we would have been hitting some of these numbers. Adams, for sure, would have hit them a point earlier in the last couple weeks, based on what we were seeing for transmission. But a different approach than Anoka Hennepin. This one is Alexandria's mitigation guide, it's much more complicated. It's using multiple data points. And you'll see that I don't have an explanation up on the side. And the reason for that is, while Alexandria does indicate that they will weigh local in-district data heavier than county data or, or other data outside the district, it doesn't give you a formula to follow in terms of how heavy the, the weight is placed. So, as you look at these tiers, one of the simplest ways to go about it, if our preference would be to look at our own internal data, would be going down to elementary classroom indicators, where again, you're going into a tiered response based on the number of active cases in a singular classroom. And then, based on these numbers here, that's transitioning into your response, your mitigation strategy down here below, which again, would include, based on their model, a face coverings required for that building and your classroom. So, looking at this, I'm just going to share a potential mitigation strategy with the board, something that would perhaps generate some discussion at subsequent meetings. I did discuss the pre-K through three classrooms with Melissa Amundson yesterday. So, one strategy might be if three or more children or staff in a single classroom have been identified and diagnosed with COVID-19 in a seven-day period, the classroom would undergo a reset period for ten days, so we would not hold classes. On the K-six side, a little more complicated in terms of depth of options. But three or more students or staff who've been diagnosed with COVID-19 in a seven-day period. So, option number one, and, and what I want to stress here, again, is we have no options that are going to appease everybody. But we have options here that give people choices, and they can, would have the personal ability to decide which is the best fit for their child and their preferences. So, option number one would be, students could continue to come to school, but those that did choose to come to school would be required to wear a mask or potentially a face shield, face shields. For, for people that question the effectiveness of masks, the medical community would largely say the face shields are significantly less effective than what the mask is. So, whether that's a good option or not, I don't know, but I'm simply putting it up there for consideration. So, all students would be required to wear a mask or a face shield for ten days past the last date of classroom exposure. So, a fairly short-term mitigation strategy, but one that would hopefully bear some results in slowing transmission in that classroom. The big advantage is that it keeps kids in person. So, let's say that, as a parent, I absolutely do not want my child wearing a mask, and I don't want them wearing a face shield. In order to keep the classroom free of additional contagion to the degree that we can, those parents could elect to keep their child at home for ten days past the last date of classroom exposure. So, as I knew the man, if you, that's going to run anywhere from, you know, six to eight days out when you consider the ten days, it's going to run through Saturdays and Sundays. Instructional support would likely simply involve sending, sending assignments or coursework home to the families, and then they would be responsible for covering that material with their children, much like if a, if a family were to choose to go on a vacation. And then, option three would be the, so let's say that, let's say that there is little support for mask-wearing, even on a very limited basis, six to eight days essentially, when you consider the impact of weekends. Nor do parents like the option number two of some of them, electing to keep their children home during that classroom reset time. The other option would be for the district to place the classroom on a ten-day reset, where students would receive their education through distance learning. So, in this case, the entire classroom would be put on a reset period. Again, considering weekends, that's going to be anywhere from six to eight days out of the direct instruction classroom setting. They would receive instruction through distance learning during that period. The advantage of option number three is that it keeps us out of the mask controversy, controversy or battle. The disadvantage is, in my opinion, distance learning is not even remotely as effective for students as being in the classroom in person. But again, as I look at this, and I've looked at it a lot, I don't see options on the instructional side and on the medication side that are going to meet everyone's expectations. It's simply not possible. Quarantine update, we did change some processes, processes on quarantining. We're fighting that the spread is taking place in the classrooms, but our post-pandemic strategies weren't necessarily identifying those that were going in from sick. An impact on the staffing side, that this has been primarily on the elementary. They continue to report some staff challenges, but have indicated that they are finding ways to make it work at this time. So, with that, I will certainly turn it over to the board for any questions.
Does anyone have?
I have a question. Jeff, in our face covering policy, you know, we had to put together last year after the governor required us to execute in order to have face coverings. Section C, number four, pre-K students aged five or younger participating in the program in the school building and district office were specifically exempted from wearing face masks. I'm wondering why we blew pre-K in this last quarter instead of following. I mean, back then, we had everybody wearing, even visitors, sports teams, everybody had to wear masks. What we specifically kept the pre-K kids outside of that, I'm wondering why it changed.
Yeah, the guidance changed, that was issued through the CDC and NDH. The la, latest guidance that I was referencing when that was put in place, I want to say had children two years and older wearing masks. I can, I can find that, that reference point and send it out to the board so you have it.
Any other questions?
I do, I have a question. In regard to this slide about staffing issues, what are the strategies that administrators in the elementary buildings are using to help with the staffing challenges?
So, essentially, that has involved, when we can't bring in enough outside subs, that involves pulling people from other responsibilities and placing them in the classroom.
I have a follow-up question. Have, are also children from other classes being put into, divided up and put into other classrooms?
That has happened, yes. So, under that strategy, we ran short of our ability to pull people from other positions. So, just quickly, our first response would always be to take from our sub pool and keep everyone in their normal roles and fill our, our gaps that way. Our second response would be, if we can't fill from outside, we're going to pull people from existing roles or utilize them during their prep period, et cetera, and fill our gaps internally by juggling responsibilities, et cetera. If we run out of people to do that, then they only then the only strategy we have left, aside from leaving kids in a classroom that would be unattended, is to take the 20 kids, let's say, and divide them up by twos and threes and spread them out into the classrooms of the remaining teachers. So for that day, they would be without their normal teacher and without their normal class and without their normal course of instruction.
So one of my reasons for asking that is how does that affect social distancing in an elementary classroom?
So it would reduce our ability for social distancing, which is already compromised. When we are at full capacity, we would be looking on the elementary side of anywhere between, let's say, 18 to 24, 25 people in the classroom plus the additional potential two or three class or students added in. We have, we have little ability to to do six feet social distancing when we are at full capacity with students in the building.
Thank you. Before I ask for any further comments from the board, I would note that I have been notified that anyone who's parked in the school bus transfer area would need to move their car. Buses are now arriving and need to be able to move for in that parking area. So the area right by the gymnasium, if anyone's parked there this morning, you would need to move so buses can operate effectively. Parking lot two, so. Yeah, so that's south of the old gym if anyone had any. With that thought, we'll take a five minute break to allow more people to move and come back in and then we'll close. Thank you. Thank you for moving swiftly. To move your car and join us. So we will resume with just the final call. Any other questions or comments for Superintendent Drake in regard to the report?
You know, I know it has to be masking and this part of it, but I just think just from our listening section two, just to some stuff that we as a school district can do, just that are controversial or anything else that I can brought up, but I think just we affirm that we are going to do that is again that we are increasing our ventilation air barriers. That we are doing social distancing the best we can, like you talked about. That we are, that our staff is encouraging students to wash their hands. I think that's something that we can encourage everyone to do. Again, to encourage people to stay home and kids stay home when they're sick. And with that, I would like to encourage us to get back to using our temperature checks. We are getting back into the flu season regardless of COVID or not. And I think that sometimes we get a little relaxed. We spent the money as a district that have them put in. I think we should use them. I just think it's a waste of taxpayers' money to not use something that's in that way that we intended to use. I think again, that will help us even during the flu season. So as soon as it comes up, high temperature, then they're able to go back home. So just some things I thought that are part of our mitigation strategy that we should use.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a couple more. I wanted to just go back to the CDC thing that you talked about. Then they changed their guidance on the pre-K. CDC changes their guidance quite regularly. Last year they told us not to use face masks because they weren't effective and then they changed it and then they changed it. So we should wear two or three face masks. It's interesting that just last month, Michael Osterholm, and everything that we're doing today, everything we're talking about today, assumes that face masks and wearing masks, masking is effective. Michael Osterholm versus, well, just right, just last month, he and the previous commissioner, yeah, the publicly noted that the limited effectiveness of cloth masks. And Celine Ronder, she is one of Biden's, the doctor, the epidemiologist from NYU. She's on his transition team for COVID-19 policy. And one of his experts, and she actually charted last month that showed that when cloth masks are worn by both source and receiver, that they provide an estimated 27 minutes of protection. 27 minutes of protection from the virus COVID. And these are, these are Biden's people that are saying this. Another point I'd like to make, we have district policy 516, which has to do with our health services. And this has to do with administrative medication. So if we have a child who has, who thinks has asthma, we are not allowed to give them an inhaler without parental permission. If we have a child who has P I or has something that I were not committed to in the midterms, without parental permission. If we have a student who has a headache, we are not allowed to give them a Lufthansa without parental permission. And so I'm just curious why you would think that we should require masks for students without parental permission. I think that that point was made in space last week by a lot of speakers and I agree with them. And I don't believe in the effectiveness of masks. I listened to the experts of the Biden team. I think that, that we really need to look at this and look at our other mitigation strategies and say that masks are not the way to go. And if we are going to do any of these matrices, matrices, then I think that we should adopt our policy for student face covering policy accommodation, if I sort to add number five to it, that says that I do not give the district permission for my child to be required to wear masks. And if parents want their children to wear masks, they can wear their masks. Staff that wanted to wear masks, they can wear masks. If they don't want to, they don't have to. I met a staff member that emailed us a couple of weeks ago, I'm not going to mention the name, that said that they had been wearing a mask faithfully in their classroom and they got COVID as a positive, you know, positive that they were sure that they got it at school, even though they've been wearing their mask all the time. And I'm like, okay, so you're telling me that masks don't work, is what you're telling them. Because you wore your mask religiously and it didn't work. So the effectiveness of masks, if you can take President Biden's expert, she's on CNN, actually, not even on Fox. I think that we really need to look at whether the, whether it's just a shifting mode of stand that CDC keeps giving us all these guidelines. If it truly was an emergency pandemic, I think our governor should, would step in, but our state House should be very reluctant. And so we're not going to do that. So the CDC says that they don't.
Adam, chairperson, I call the question. We don't have, I had some comments from the board. And so if you could give me a little clarity, I don't believe it's up to the board.
I'll finish very quickly. Thank you. CDC has the authority to have face coverage permitted or required in the buses because it's a federal thing. They do not, they said they don't have the authority right now to require them in schools. The governor does not have the authority to require them in schools because he gave up his authority. And it's set up the school district to do that in the school boards. And I believe that we do not have authority to do that and I will strongly oppose any any mask mandates. Thank you.
All right, we'll continue on with the agenda. And we still do have opportunity for commentary. I'm going to call for a motion in regard to COVID-19 mitigation, seeking a motion to endorse whether or not we continue with the mask mandate, which expires at the end of this school week, or whether we discontinue. And so if someone would put forward a motion, please. So we are seeking a motion in regard to the students and the mitigation strategy we had and we continue with the mandate that was previously imposed.
I would make a motion that we, that we end the mandate, the mask mandate as of the end of today, as was originally set up on the range for Friday, but there's also a little more on Fridays. Okay, so we'll make it Friday. Thank you.
So the motion is on the table to end the mask mandate at the end of Friday, as was previously set forth as an ending date. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. And now we have an opportunity for discussion or comments. Any discussion or comments from the board in regard to the motion at hand?
So I really liked Jeff's final mitigation, steps one, two, and three. In speaking with staff and students and family that I have here in the district, I think it's a secret that there's a lot of kids that are not masking, there's staff that's not masking and whatnot. And I like, you know, it's too bad that we have to go to that next level. But if we are, you know, step three, if there's three or more classes or three or more students in a classroom that are testing positive within that seven day timeframe, maybe we do have to just bite the bullet and go distance learning. I mean, that's not what we want to do. But if we can't comply and we can't, we can't get on the same page for various reasons, and I'll be honest, and I should back and forth, you'll see me out in public, unmasked. But I work in a healthcare organization where we have to mask. So, you know, I have my personal and my professional world as well. But I think just to get us all on the same page, I do agree with some of Jeff's suggestions in his final slide there about mitigation options.
Any other comments?
Chair, can you have those mitigation options put back up on the screen?
Would you accommodate that?
I'm just wondering, is the best way to for clarity for the public to put this in place now or wait until Monday since we've just seen this today? Or how do we should go about to get clarity to the public?
In conversation and planning for the board meeting this morning, it's my intention that we take the information we received from Superintendent Drake in regard to next steps for mitigation, whether it be a matrix or another type of protocol or kind of advisory to the superintendent. Just to delay a decision in regard to that until we have a full board discussion at Monday night's board meeting. And so I think that there's too much to review in order to do it in this forum and at this time. And, and so to stick to the motion before us, we'll vote this morning whether or not to continue. And then Monday night we'll have a board meeting and then we will more fully review with the information that Superintendent Drake has provided us, what, what it is that the board would like to endorse going forward. Does that make sense to you? And I, I would note that I prepared some comments for today and I did that in response to last week's listening session, primarily my reflections on that. But I, before I give those comments, I would just once again applaud and appreciate our superintendent, who has been very thoughtful, very thorough. He's an intelligent man that has guided this district through a very, very difficult time. I'm, I am just regretful that he had been abused in the process of the public outcry, because I don't think we could find a more stellar superintendent. He has my full support. He is operating in a very difficult situation. And you can see from the presentations he makes to the public that he's quite balanced in his approach and quite thorough. And so with that, I would, I would just once again reiterate that it's a very difficult time. The board passed a resolution to give the daily operations in regard to COVID to the superintendent. We did that in August. He has communicated with the board. We could have objected had we not wanted the mask requirement implemented. And as board, we did not object. And so this is the board's decision and we are well guided by the superintendent. So nearly 70 Minnesota school board members have resigned this year and really it's no mystery why. State and nationwide, there's been a single issue response from the public and there is no ability to satisfy. The number of people I saw at last week's listening session exceeded the cumulative tally of nearly 19 years on the school board. If we remove the amount of times the teaching staff has come with their, with their contract concerns, exceeded 19 years of school board attendance. We came and we go with thousands of hours of meetings and training about the multifaceted decisions to be made by as a school board member. That's what we do. It's clear many people who came to our listening session last week have been unaware of who's on the board and what our practices are. We tackle many issues which with much more gravity than masking and yet we get no involvement. So to my point, this is your school. This is our school together. So showing up over six and a half days of masking seems trite to me. There's much more to it and, and as a board, we continue to operate with a great deal of information at our hands. We are transparent and if someone's not paying attention, that doesn't mean we're not operating in transparency. Our meetings are public. Notably, not one speaker last week gave the solution for what we'll do when we cannot staff an elementary classroom. That's what propelled us to the masking requirement. Having a random parent show up and operate a classroom for a day is not an option, nor should it ever be. If we have an influx of qualified substitutes applying for the district, then I would call everything we've done here open. Maybe we're a better community after last week's listening session. I don't know. I thought it was compelling. Parents and grandparents showed up concerned about children's welfare and decided boo a member of the community as they spoke. I find that ironic. It's alleged that we are teaching critical race theory by one of the speakers, which is not a curriculum and is not being taught in our school. It was stated that wearing a mask is child abuse. I investigate child abuse for a living and I found that comment repugnant. And no offense, but if we don't know what we're doing as a school board, maybe we could get a citizen task force involved. Well, that's what we are. We are elected citizen task force who's coming in day in, day out, doing our, our responsibilities as a school board. Last year, no one ran against the incumbents that were up for school board and we had been making COVID decisions for about seven months at that point. We have a curriculum review committee where the mundane decisions are made about what to teach in a classroom and how to present it. And we cannot effectively fill that committee because citizens don't want to volunteer. We have routine employment options. Routinely, we have employment options at the school. So you won't get science from me or pseudo-science about masking or not masking. My point is that I'm grounded in our students, our school, our community, and I'll make the best practical decision I can at the time. And I would encourage you to stay involved. That's my point. It's interesting and not at all unwelcome to have community input, but to find it a spike at such a, on such one issue topic is notable for me. at such a, on such one issue topic is notable for me. I know we can't satisfy everyone, each one of us in a minimal vote, probably according to how we would have even before the listening session or even before the mandate went into effect. And so that concludes my comments. Any other comments from the board?
I just wanted to make a comment on the listening section itself. The mandate that was put in by Superintendent Drake, everybody that spoke that did not want their child to wear a mask, did not have to wear a mask. Every exemption, every exemption that they asked for, they were given. I think as a mandate that we put in, those that are more like me, who probably are families like me, who go, if you ask me to wear a mask, I'll wear a mask. If you don't ask me to wear a mask, if I don't wear a mask. It's just how I go. You know what? But I do respect those people that are trying to do their best. Okay? And I think that as a community, we are trying to do our best. And we all have different views and viewpoints, but I think that the mitigation strategies that Superintendent Drake was trying to use, and also knowing just because of what was happening in our school, and not having, not having selves, and having the lack of teachers, I do feel that it was the right thing to do. And I support Superintendent Drake 100%. I think he has the best interest of every kid in our district. I know somebody had made the comment that we represent the majority of the community. And while we do run as a school board, we are not, I don't consider myself a political entity. I consider that I command every student in the Fergus Falls Public Schools to succeed, to graduate, and fund their own opinions. I don't believe it's my responsibility to put into them something that I personally believe, if it doesn't have to do with character and things like that. That's why I'm a big fan of student and graduate, and what we're doing as a district, I think it's positive stuff. I think it's good for our community. I believe it's good for our society, and I just believe it's good for our future. So I just want to, again, say that as a board member, I do support 100% Superintendent Drake also. I believe he has the best interest of all students, and he is giving parents the ability to make decisions through this. Thank you.
Any other remarks? There are none, and I'll call for a vocal vote on the motion, which is to discontinue the mask mandate as of Friday of this week. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, no. Stephen Vigess, no. The motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the agenda that we have before us this morning. As I noted in previous comments, we will have a regular school board meeting on Monday night at 5:15, barring a large amount of attendees, we'll resume our regular meeting spot at the Otter Community Room. And at that time, at the conclusion, we will continue the discussion. You can be very assured of that. And so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this special board meeting. A second?
Sorry.
Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. And we are adjourned. Thank you.